I'm Howard Grace, this is Eric Spine, Adam Cosper from our town council, Wayne Baker and Susan Oyster, our administrator. So where are we starting tonight?
We'll start with Mr. Capulupo, the first one right now. Exactly.
How are you? Okay, so when you were here the last time, you were going to address the electrical, the plan and go over the whole list and have everything very clear. We have two issues that are outstanding, electric and second. The four-bedroom system in the board of health required for the detached structure to be a one-bedroom. So I've provided you with different plans, one with the detached accessory structure that will be modified to be a one-bedroom, as well as a site plan that delineates underground electric service from the primary structure to the detached accessory apartment. And I hope that the board will be comfortable and satisfied that by law can issue a special permit.
All right, so the, this line is still on the drawing. I'm sure that line comes off, but if this is the underground electric, then we have an underground electric, and then we're all set.
But see, they've got the note that that's going to be discontinued in a minute.
Okay. This is the line with you? No, I know, I'm just checking with you. The line's good with you, the one bedroom?
Yeah, it seems to be working. And Board of Health has seen this, what was the septic again?
It's a four, it's a four-bedroom.
House.
No, it's a three-bedroom house.
House.
Four-bedroom system.
Correct.
Okay, so it's been a long time since we started. But, yeah, so we're all in agreement that these were the only two things when we moved the list.
Yeah, one time we had a notarized letter about the standard language about an accessory apartment, which I believe we received. I don't know if we have that in the...
I think it was no de-restrictions, other de-restrictions, so we do have that on file?
Yep.
Okay.
The only three notes I have of these are Title V, electric, and the de-restriction which we have.
Right, and Board of Health is...
That's Title V.
Yep, and the electric.
E.
Right. Okay. Anybody want to add any information, comments? Good. Ready to make a motion?
I'm ready. Yes. I propose a motion to grant a special permit for relief from Section 97-10D of the New bury zoning bylaws for the proposed attached accessory apartment located on 40 Old Rowley Road, with noting that the septic system or that the four-bedroom septic system is divided between a three-bedroom house and a one-bedroom accessory apartment, and two, the condition subject to the abandonment of the existing street to access the apartment electrical line.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I propose motion passes. You're welcome.
So we'll get the decision written, I'll notify you when it's in the decor, when the day clock starts, and then you can make up your decision, record it, and then see Sam about any necessary permits or modifications that you need.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good, I don't have an agenda in front of me.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Okay.
Senator question? Yep. Hunter and Sandra Kostonas continue hearing, applicant requesting a special permit for relief from Section 97-10D of the Newbury zoning bylaws for use in the existing barn as a detached accessory apartment, which requires a special permit for the lot property located at 105 High Road, accessories map are 48-0-49.
Okay.
So he is not here tonight. Sandra Kostanas sent me an email yesterday on their behalf saying that they were still in Florida, could not finish their renovations, they're on time to get back for their scheduled meeting, asking for a reschedule, and letting, to let her know what they needed to do. I didn't respond because I figured today was one day later. I wanted to find out how the board wanted to handle it.
Okay, I know how I want to handle it, but I'm going to ask for your opinion, Adam. Can we vote on this even though they're not here?
So there's nothing that says you can't vote simply because they're not present?
Okay.
It's always in your discretion to grant a continuance or not.
Right.
I generally recommend that boards grant reasonable continuances, and that means reasonable in terms of the circumstances, in terms of the numbers of requests for continuances that have been made. There certainly comes a point in time during the public hearing process where if you get requests after requests after requests for continuance, you can either act on the information that's before you or deny it for lack of information. That's in your discretion.
What I will, you know, with Mr. Capulupo, what we did in the last meetings, we did continual, but you did ask me to get a hold of him and let him know that we did expect to see his plans, and we expected him to be before us with the information so that we could come to a decision. And if he did not, then we would respectfully ask that they withdraw, or we would make a motion to vote. So we may want to do it the same way, but I wanted to remind you that's our...
I think that...
This has gone on for months.
It has gone on for months, but I think I'm in the process of drafting conditions of continuance which would have better language to spell out the reasons for the board taking action. So at this point, I would, I would propose a motion that we grant a continued hearing with two conditions. One is they want, that they re-advertise the application to the neighbors. It's gone on so long, nobody knows what the status is, and here we have a meeting and they show up, and the whole effort of people in the know would be one condition. Two, that we notify them that they have, they have one more chance to come before us, and we will take action to either withdraw their application, make a motion to withdraw their application, or vote on their application. And we'll put that in writing and sign that down.
Does that sound to you, Wayne? Or what are you thinking?
Most of what they had to do before they even came before us.
Right, well, number one is they've never decommissioned the apartment.
No.
Which was, so it's illegal, so I don't know how we can even vote on anything they asked for with that. And I think they never corrected the septic problem.
No, the groundwater cesspool.
Right, so...
And if I recall, part of their last zoning application and your decision was to decommission at that time.
Right.
And they've not done it for however many years it's been.
Four, five years, so...
Yeah.
I guess I'm fine going along with Eric with those conditions, and that the apartment needs to be decommissioned before they come to us, and the groundwater cesspool, or whatever they have there, needs to be corrected.
By next meeting?
Yeah, exactly. Is that...
I think it's fair because the rental apartment is the authority of the building department, and we're saying that they're, they've already given notice on that. And the Board of Health has already given them notice on the cesspool, so we're not at...
The zoning board gave notice like five years ago.
Right, so we're just asking for conditions that have already been put in place by other boards to be met before, before the application can even be heard, and if they can't get that straight, then they should withdraw.
Okay, take a motion.
Okay, so I'll make a motion for a continued hearing on the condition that they provide, they must come with the evidence...
That they're free advertising, notified the others as well?
Well, they notified the others as one. Two, they bring evidence of the septic system in the direction of the Board of Health. And third, they bring direction, that the, they bring resolution to the direction of the building department on the illegal apartment. Let's simplify it a little.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Dorothy Street?
Yes.
All right, Dorothy Street, continue hearing, the applicant requesting a special permit for relief from Section 97-10D to C of the Newbury zoning bylaws to create an accessory apartment, which requires a special permit for the lot property located at 23 Old Mine Road, accessories map are 32-0-37.
Good evening, Mark.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Where are we with this?
We are, we now have a building permit in hand.
Okay.
This one appears to be pretty solid this time, and so we'll move to request that you withdraw the application.
I do just want to update you on what the caveat was, is the building permit was issued with the stairwell going to the second and/or third floor externally.
Okay.
The bylaw calls for it to go internally, so Sam is not going to issue the occupancy unless the stairwell is moved internally and has notified the builder on that.
So we did new plans showing them a closed staircase. So we don't think we need this application.
There's a motion to...
We'll make a motion to withdraw, that the application be withdrawn without prejudice.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I propose...
Yep. Number four, number five, The cottages at Plum Island LLC, number 14, Plum Island Boulevard, continued hearing, applicant is requesting relief from Section 97-4D of the Newbury zoning bylaws as the proposed change of use and associated construction requires a finding to alter or extend a non-conforming use from an auto repair school to an accessory use structure and parking for the proposed restaurant at 2 Old Point Road for the lot property located at 8R Old Point Road in Plum Island, accessories map U-02-0153. Second, The cottages commercial LLC, 14 Plum Island Boulevard, continued hearing, the applicant is requesting relief from Section 97-4D of the Newbury zoning bylaws as the proposed change of use and associated construction requires a finding to alter or extend a non-conforming use from a mixed-use auto sales repair and residential to a restaurant use for the property located at 2 Old Point Road, Plum Island, accessories map U-02-0154.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, we're looking for the applicant. This is Jeff Christensen, owner of the principal in the LLC that owns the property. The last time we were in front of the board, my recollection anyway, is that there were two major outstanding issues, one of which was the combination of 2 Old Point Road and 8R Old Point Road, and that is something that we've taken care of. So our proposal to have restaurant parking and storage on 8R will now be one combined lot, which basically it's The cottages commercial LLC now owns both lots together. So there's actually two deeds in there. One is from The cottages on Plum Island to Vincent Goaten and Jeffrey Christensen, and then the second deed is from the individuals to The cottages commercial. So we have the booking page there, if you need a copy, Trina Costa can give that to you.
Thank you.
So that was one of the open items. And then the second one was, the second one was absolutely more time-consuming, and that was providing you with evidence that the non-conforming use that was going on on the lots as they're combined was pre-existing prior to the adoption of zoning, which we have been informed in 1959, and that that use continued through, well, 2017 uninterrupted and undis, or not discontinued for a period of two years, so that it wouldn't have lost its non-conforming protection by virtue of that. We provided you with a binder, much of which was researched by Jeff Christensen, and the majority of those records were obtained at Town Hall, some were obtained in the library, some were also just affidavits from people who actually had personal knowledge, one of which was Joyce Macheros, who was one of the original purchasers in 1970, and then sold to Jeffrey and Vincent. And then the other is, Alde Gold, or her affidavit, has personal observations from 1958 onwards. You'll also note that in the written documentation that we've submitted, we have a notice that Foster Fenton began operating, getting a permit to operate the gas station at the lots in 1955. So we start off with a service station operating prior to the adoption of zoning. So we're in before the 1959 zoning adoption, and then as you follow the documentary trail, you can see it from the timeline that we've submitted, that the documentation covers every year, and, you know, this was obviously difficult to compile because there is a lot of documents that simply don't exist anymore in the town, in every Town Hall, by virtue apparently of flooding or mold that had to be disposed of. So, you know, the absence of some records does not necessarily indicate that there was any abandonment or discontinuance, it just means that there's the absence of some records. To the extent that there may be insufficient specific documentation in this timeline, the affidavits do cover the time from the adoption of zoning all the way until 2017, and they assert that that use was continuous. And so, you know, we would respectfully submit that we've met the criteria for establishing pre-existing legally non-conforming use of the service station use, also the used car use on lots, and that the board has now got sufficient information on which to make a decision on the applications for findings, and we would respectfully request that we continue with those applications.
So this is, I haven't even seen this. I received this tonight, I don't know when it came in, but...
It was around last week, last week.
We only had two copies, so we just got it Monday, so we got it.
So I'm just seeing, I've seen this tonight, have you seen it previously?
No.
Eric, you...
I have.
Okay, and Adam, you've been able to review it?
I have.
So let me, if you don't mind, ask you what you think of the documentation.
Sure, so I guess let me, let me preface my remarks by saying that it's obviously not my role as town council to make findings a fact, so I'll give you a general sense as to what I can conclude based upon my review, but what you determined based upon the materials, and I recognize that maybe you're not prepared to do that tonight if you haven't had a chance to review it, it's substantial, is up to all of you. So I've reviewed it, just to be sure that there were second set of eyes on it, I had a colleague of mine review it as well, we both read through the material. You know, I commend the applicant, it's a comprehensive package of information that provides data through the years dating back to the late 1950s, includes, as you just heard, everything from affidavits to business records, records on file, whether it be with the library or Town Hall, licenses and permits and approvals and such that issued, and documents on file with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts relative to registration of business entities. So it's a, it's a comprehensive package. The challenge that I had in reading through it is that, as you know, and it was just stated a moment ago, you've got two properties here. You've got the service station property, you've got the adjacent lot that is the subject, according to the applicant of, or was previously used for some sort of a school. The issue that I've got with the materials as I read them is that there's, there's no clear delineation, portion by portion of this package of information, between the lot in which the service station sits and the lot in which the other building sits, that apparently was used for some sort of a school, and is now proposed to be used for additional parking for, for the proposed use of the service station site. It's sort of all one package of information, and the bulk of it, as I read it, refers to the service station. So it's, from my perspective, again, just speaking personally, and this is legal advice per se, and it's for you to make your own findings, I see enough information here to conclude, if you see fit to do so, that dating back to, prior to the adoption of zoning, that would prohibit this service station use, this potential conversion to a restaurant use, there is adequate information here, or I could perceive a board finding that that use has continued and is therefore grandfathered. You still have to make the finding as to whether or not the conversion is appropriate based upon the standards that we've laid out for you, converting from one non-conforming use to another non-conforming use, but I think you've got enough information here that references Angie's, or the service station, or the gas station, or the repair station, to be able to put two and two together and say there's enough here that the use has continued. Whether you can make that same finding for the adjacent lot, I think is more difficult based upon what's here. There is a reference to this entity, which I presume is the entity that is the school, Applied Automotive Technology, Inc., and if you go back, the first record that we have is the filing, the articles of organization with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, I think that's the earliest record that we have, from the mid or late 1990s. The first record that we have on file with the town was an application for some sort of a business license or registration of the business in the mid 2000s, I think it was 2004, 2005, but obviously that gets us nowhere near the 1950s, which is where we would need to start, the same way that we do for, for the service station, to get us the continuous use from prior to the advent of zoning to the current date. So could you find, based upon what's here, and based upon some of the vague testimony in the affidavits, that there was some sort of teaching or educational component going on? I suppose you could, but there's nothing that I saw that is direct evidence. There's some statements in Ms. Macheros's affidavits that, in addition to running a service station, in the time my family owned the service station property, we used the property for other purposes, such as manufacturing and selling woodworking, used car sales and educational classes for mechanics, so there is that statement included in the affidavit, but she says, "In the time my family owned the service station property, we used the property." So what does she mean by the service station property? Is it the property that we've got quite a bit of data regarding, or is it the adjacent lot that is proposed to be used for parking? It's unclear from what's here. With regard to the woodworking and the used car sales, those were all on the Angie service station lot, and there's plenty of data here to support that. So that's what I saw as the gap in the information from my review, and again, my colleague arrived at the same conclusion when she reviewed it all. I would urge the board to look through it before you make any attorney to findings, because you may see something I didn't, or you may reach a different conclusion than I have.
If I may, sorry, the woodworking and school, that was done in the barn property on 8R, which, it may have been unclear in the fact, but that's where those businesses were conducted, as well as, the earliest we could find for that property is when it was built in 1970, the building permit was issued as a workshop and garage, as an accessory for the lot.
So the building on the second, well, called the second lot?
Yeah.
Was built in 1970?
Yeah, there's a building permit in the timeline that you...
Is that in this package?
It is, yeah.
Yeah, I have to say that I echo Adam's comments.
Number one.
My own review, it's clear that from 1972 to 1972, 1970 to 2017, in terms of the data, it seems to check out roughly, but the workshop, they could only go back to 1970. Were the lots ever one, one big lot at one time?
I believe so. They were owned in common, yes, but I don't, like, you know, describe as one lot, so, but they were owned by the same owners.
And there are some...
And from what we can see from photos and what we gathered, was that basically they, when they were owned in common, they were treated as if they were one big parcel. And so you had used car sales, the cars being parked on 8R, and, you know, cars that needed to be worked on, that couldn't fit on the service station lot, that parked on 8R. Storage and things also happened on 8R, but the only record we have of a building permit for the storage building is in 1970. That doesn't mean there wasn't a building prior to 1970, it only means we can only find that one record. So, you know, we're tasked with coming down with a lot of detail when we have a significant gap in records that we can obtain.
Is there anyone in the audience that has any information regarding this, or any questions or comments?
Yes, sir. I can comment that I personally purchased auto parts from Gary, from that barn building, and I also helped him write the resume that got him that mechanics teaching job, and you know, very aware that he was doing that kind of teaching and work out of that barn building. And I can attest to, you know, the auto parts, I needed a new battery for a Prius, he showed me several that were stored in that building. So as far as I can tell, that building's always been kind of part and parcel of the gas station, as well as the mechanics, as well as, you know, I... gas station, as well as the mechanics, as well as, you know, I also know that they did that woodworking business out there. I personally saw a lot of that stuff.
Thank you.
I could second that as well, because I know that when I would see Gary over there, he'd be working and have people working on the woodwork products that they were doing, you know, many years back.
In the 70s, when I was a kid, my parents would have Gary serve us all day cars.
That doesn't directly answer.
No, there are a couple of photos in here, some green sheds and things that obviously aren't front buildings, but there's no, there's not enough context to really quickly size them up of what was there. Google Earth does have, go back, I don't know quite how far it goes back to different sections, but you can, 2017, you can start drilling back to see different.
I don't think you can go back past 2000, I mean, 1970.
Well, you never know what your photos might be that I'm just saying.
I can try.
So, I guess, you know, understanding what is in here and what can be validated, in terms of Lot 2, I mean, it's here to be reviewed. In terms of Lot 8R, I guess you still have questions of what the intent of that lot is and the use of that.
The intent of what we want to use it for, or what it was used for?
Well, what you're gonna use it for, because there's two, there's two units on the lot, and a service garage building. And so you've got three things, and the effort, first effort and step here is to prove out that they were existing uses on the property. So now you've got residential and you've got business on the same property. You've got one of the houses that's not even on the, half on the property, half off the property.
Right.
Then, the effort, or it seems the intent, would be to take and build a restaurant of a certain size that requires additional parking on an adjacent or another lot.
Correct.
Okay. So, if you're gonna do that, then your intent is to put additional parking on that lot and keep the garage with the unit in it, and keep the cottage on the lot as well?
Well, definitely keep the cottage on the lot, but I think the barn was gonna be storage for the restaurant.
Yeah, the barn doesn't have a residence.
No, no residential use of that barn.
Has a full bath, but it's just used for storage.
Not intending to use it.
But it still has a full bath.
It does, but, yeah.
At the moment, whether it's, you know, whether you have a building permit.
If that's, if that's an issue, I'm sure we can address it.
Well, you've got, I mean, I may be getting ahead of myself with the proof, but it's still, and we may not have, I may be jumping ahead in terms of solving, getting to that, but, you know, you have a second lot, which you're going to put parking on, and then you're gonna have a residence, and so something needs to clearly be shown that the residence, I mean, you're gonna have, you're gonna wanna come back and renovate that residence at some point in time. It's not in the greatest condition, and it is sitting on someone else's property. And so you're gonna come back and show that, it would seem that you, that would need to be part of some plan that showed the required parking and the relocated unit in the position that meets zoning.
For the, for the residential building on the property, is that what you're talking about?
Right, and so that's, that's one, that's just getting the cottage in what might be perceived, you know, a better place in the neighborhood and meeting zoning. Now we have a service station, a garage or shed that you wanna use as part of the restaurant. It seems to me that the path would be pretty clear if Lot 2 was just emptied of what uses instructions were on it, and you positioned the restaurant and parking on the two lots appropriately, and move forward from there. It seems that you're trying hard to get a lot on a little that keeps then having a tangent to something else that isn't quite solved or made better.
Well, we didn't really think that we were doing much else other than what exists there now. So, the additional, you know, restaurant parking is on that, is proposed to be on that lot, and that would be similar to the way cars had been parked on there when the service station use was going on, and when the used car use was going on. The barn will still remain as it does now, where there used to be the mechanic's school. The house is still there. So you had a non-conforming use along with a residential use prior to this application. After this application, you got the same buildings, you're still gonna have a non-conforming use and a residential use. So, we didn't, we didn't think that we were asking for anything out of the ordinary with the additional parking being on the restaurant. We actually thought that that was a fairly good fit, and attempted to sort of continue what was there before, although to a different degree and with a different, with a different primary use, the accessory use being the parking and the storage.
Yeah, and the cottage was thought to be, you know, a place for the chef to live or something. It was never meant to be renovated and sold, well, it couldn't be sold, but it was meant to just be kept up in a reasonable way.
So, I understand that, but the intent of zoning is the improvement for the future, which, once you sell the property, you can't guarantee that. We've had certain properties come before us with apartments in it that were represented to be apartments that weren't legal apartments. And so, you know, it is our effort and duty to try to make any property that comes before us as conforming, as conforming, or in Plum Island, as conforming as possible for the betterment of the neighborhood. The fact that we lived there is a little bit irrelevant as to having a legal apartment. I guess you haven't redrawn the plan, or have any thoughts of?
Oh, you mean to show it as it's combined with the deeds?
No, no.
We took the deeds together and we put events.
Well, it's common ownership, so now in terms of the intent, I mean, it would be good that we walked through that Section 7 of the off-street parking, and that all the, you know, it does state within here that the off-street parking, these views for, off-street parking for spaces, loading bays, bicycles are all provided in accordance with bylaw. So, I know that you have gone before planning review, and you're trying to get one step before the next, but I'm sure planning, planning review will have some comments about the parking and location of the parking.
I have no doubt that the site plan review would, you know, be running us through the layout and the traffic flow.
So, to my point, it'd be good to see the on-plan, the proposed relocation of a cottage so that the parking could be assessed against that and not burden the lot with parking, and then come back to us and ask for more relief because you can't fit the cottage on there because you got the parking on there.
We don't plan to relocate the cottage, though. That's, that's not part of our proposal.
I think they're just proposing to leave the cottage as is.
And that may be a non-starter for me, to have a cottage that's have on someone's property and someone else's property when they're asking for, or leaving for grandfather a use of continuing.
Well, I think the issue with that, you mean the lot lying behind the cottage, that I think we addressed in a previous meeting, that the accessory drew that line, and it's actually only on one property.
Where is that?
Is it on the site plan, too?
Is it on the, do you think it's a part of the line? Do you have any?
I think, I'm not sure which ends. I think in a previous meeting, we did. Correct? Yeah, we do own that, but now it's under different ownership because these are combined.
Yeah, but this is owned by an.
In principle, we're the same owners, yeah.
So, the encroachment is on the property that owned by the applicant.
I'm sure what Eric's thinking is, they're not always gonna be owned by the same owner.
Well, if we could, if we had an encroachment on, on such part of the deed. It could be an easement, and you have to be relocating the cottage. You know, we could take back an easement before we sold the adjacent property.
I mean, it just seems, Mark, that if you're gonna make this much of an investment in the property for the betterment of the property, that a few, a few things could be done to make it withstand and bring it up to zoning, so it didn't have any issues or encumbrances going forward. You know, it's, you just keep exasperating an old problem, and if we could solve all the problems for what you wanted to do, then there wouldn't be any problems in the future going forward.
Well, before we sell the other property, we're gonna take care of that encroachment, or we wouldn't be able to sell. I mean, that's, no one's gonna buy, buy the property with a piece of somebody else's house on it.
Understood.
But moving, moving an entire house is a big project, and.
I didn't have to say move it, I said make provisions for showing that it would fit on Lot 8R, so that there was a reasonable plan in place that could be documented and understood, and when the planning board looks at this, if it was to get that far, they would say, oh, we understand the new location for a cottage to be here, and the setbacks are such, and the parking works around it in such a way, so that the parking, the setbacks, and a new cottage location all work hand in hand. If this happens, I mean, you know.
So leave us, leave a place for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that.
And then, then you're not, then you're not double dipping on parking, and then you can't fit the cottage back on the lot that it belongs on.
I don't see why we can't work a configuration that would leave a space for that.
Yeah, and show it, and show that it fits, and show that it needs zoning.
Speaking without talking to the guy who drafted the plan.
Right, and Eric's really getting a step beyond probably what we need to concentrate in on.
Use first, yeah.
I think.
Yeah, I know, you're giving them food to eat.
Keeps coming before us, I'd like to just put my thoughts out there, not, you know, bring it next time and say, oh, by the way, and oh, by the way, so it was just, that is one concern that I have. The second was the use of the full bathroom, or having two quote units, and two livable units, plus a business use on one lot.
I'm a little concerned that if we continue again, that I'm gonna, I'm gonna draw more questions, because I thought we had two when we came in here tonight, and now it seems to be spreading to other issues that we weren't prepared to address. It's your purview, you can do that, but it's difficult for us to manage.
Yeah, you understood, Mark, but I think we had one huge hurdle that we're still trying to get over before we get to the next issues, and that's of use.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, you're making progress on that point, and that's why I'm bringing up these other issues now, so that.
constructive feedback is appreciated, and we can definitely see if we can, you know, leave a space for the relocation.
Does the fact that they're all one lot now help our cause for the use?
I guess, the question is just standing, is it, is it one huge lot, or is it two lots under common ownership?
It shouldn't make any difference for zoning. We needed to have both lots owned by the same entity in order to park on the other lot. However, you know, putting both on one deed should not make any difference with respect to the zoning use of property.
Well, right, I'm just saying if they were combined in one, and you then moved the position of the restaurant to be centered in the lot, parking around it or something like that, just thinking how that might affect it.
Sorry, we were told already by planning that the Old Point and Plum Island Boulevard side could not be used for parking.
True.
So it's, the building's positioned such that.
Yeah, that's why, that's why we cited it where we didn't.
Let's get that review used. I have a review of the book, how it hasn't, how we haven't put Lot 2, I reviewed it, it's improved, Lot 2.
That's the one that's a little bit in question.
No, 8R, I thought was in question.
8R is a question.
Oh, okay.
Lot 2 is the materials.
Right, that one.
It seems to be clear from 1970 forward, from 19.
No. The gas stations.
Two, two Old Point.
Two Old Point from 1972 to 217 is Lot 2, which was the gas station lot.
Yeah.
The work shed on 8R is, seems to have documentation from 1970 forward.
Yeah, I think, I think we got two Old Point from 1955 forward, and 8R, there's a building permit in 1970, that's the workshop you're talking about.
Right.
And actually, that kind of begs the question of the use and structure authorized by a building permit. Wouldn't that be deemed non-conforming at this point, a non-conforming use?
Can you say that again?
I'll let you refer this to your.
Yeah.
You know, this, this use and structure were authorized in 1970 pursuant to a building permit. That could be valid, the grandfathered use by virtue of that at this time.
By virtue of statute of limitations, you mean?
Correct.
No statute on the use, destruction, can't, couldn't ruin the structure now.
But with a permit for the use.
Still no grandfathering, no statute on the use, even with a permit, six and ten on the structure, but nothing on the use. Been down that road too many times.
So we need use prior to that.
Yeah, we won't be able to get any documentation, I don't believe. We might be able to get witness observation.
Yeah, not having looked at this, it sounds like that would be more than what you have now.
For that lot.
For that one, yeah.
Is that suitable?
So it's, it's really a matter of the board's discretion, so to sort of frame where we are, not getting into the question of the finding and the appropriateness of the conversion of the use, which touches upon some of your questions about, you know, do we relocate the building, or do you provide additional location for future relocation of the cottage? Those are issues that certainly you can address as part of your finding and potentially conditioning a future finding. But to get to the point where you're prepared to make a finding, you have to be satisfied that this particular, these particular properties qualify for the non-conforming protection, such that they can even make application under this section of your bylaw. So, as I see it, you essentially have three options. Option one is you can find, based upon the information that's here, and you don't have to do this tonight, you can do it once you've reviewed the book, or you can make it contingent upon additional information being provided, whether it's tied with testimony, further affidavits, further documentation. Option one is you find that you are satisfied, or dissatisfied, based upon the information that's presented, that both of these lots qualify for non-conforming stacks, and therefore you can proceed to the next step, which is to make a finding. Option two is you can find that one of the lots does and one of the lots doesn't. And I think we've just heard, based on the analysis of two of us, that it seems pretty clear that the number two qualifies, we've got documentation here back to the 1950s, more questionable with respect to 8R. If you were to make that finding, then you'd put the applicant in a position where they would have to adjust their project to get it onto 8R, whether that means making the building smaller, the restaurant smaller, they would have to find a way to get their parking onto 8R. They couldn't utilize, excuse me, they're, oh, the two, couldn't utilize 8R for parking. That's option two. Option three is you've got variance provisions in your bylaw where the applicant can seek zoning relief, more extensive relief than a finding, where they could come to you and see variances, either depending upon how they structure it, it'd either be a structural, it'd either be a dimensional variance or a, or a use variance.
We don't have use, we don't have use variances in our bylaws.
You do in the Plum Island Overlay District.
Oh, we do?
Do, except for accessory apartments. For accessory apartments. I'll redo the provision.
Okay, yeah, because that was an accessory apartment that we said, told us, yeah.
The last case we had was an accessory.
Right, and you've got another section of your bylaw that is more specific, that says that in the event that a variance is sought, it can only be for an attached, which is the detached accessory apartment. So detached accessory apartments can't be permitted by variance, but in Section 4D, Plum Island, you've got a provision that says, the Board of Appeals may grant use variances within the Plum Island Overlay District, provided the Board of Appeals finds that the proposed use is not more detrimental than the current use. But the usual variance.
But the usual variance standard would apply, so I don't think they suggest that that's easy relief. It's, you know, soil shape, topographical conditions, hardship, all that good stuff. So that's not an easy task, but it's an option.
That's in four D?
Yeah, it's four D J.
And what was stated by Mark about the use of AR as parking or backup space for lot two? Parking is a use?
So this is challenging because the suggestion is that in connection with the service station use, which if you conclude that two is a valid non-conforming use because of predate zoning, therefore that's a lawful use, lawful non-conforming use. The suggestion is that that lawful non-conforming use extended onto an adjacent property historically and therefore should be permitted to extend onto that adjacent property moving forward. If they were able to establish that fact to 1958, then we could have a conversation that, okay, in 1958, maybe there's nothing that says that that AR property could legally be used for that purpose, but it was being used in that, in that way because overflow parking from two was on AR. Without going back that far, you're, it's the same analysis, which is, you know, how is it being used prior to the advent of zoning that prohibited it? The fact that in 1975, you had zoning in place and said commercial users were not permitted on AR, that they were using AR for overflow, all that means is that they were violating zoning back in 1975. It doesn't give them any grandfather protection.
Understood, but the point of use of parking being used and not specifically building, a building isn't necessarily found, I mean, in terms of the records that were provided, there could be different records that show parking on that from the time of zoning creation going forward.
There could be. I mean, the funny thing here is that parking is an accessory use, right? I mean, nobody's suggesting here that it was being used as a parking structure or a parking lot. It was, it was, at least as of 1970, it was a lot that had a structure, some sort of a workshop. So parking is an accessory use and you complicate matters when you suggest that AR was being used for accessory parking, but it wasn't accessory to what was necessarily occurring on AR in that, in that building or that shed. It was accessory to what was occurring on an adjacent property. So you've got a lot of pieces to this puzzle and the applicant can attest to that based on all this. I mean, trying to recreate history going back some 60 years plus, it's challenging to do. But I don't disagree that every bit of information the applicant can provide, whether it's with respect to the principal use or accessory use, parking or some other non-residential use, it's all part of the equation and it can be weighed by the board in making that determination as to whether you have sufficient information in front of you, whether it's direct evidence or circumstantial evidence to suggest that one or both of these properties has historically and prior to zoning been used for a commercial purpose.
Do we know that the two lots were created prior to 1959?
The two lots?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, it's only been two owners prior to the current owner.
So, Jeff, without going through all this, I know you have Eric and Adam made his comments. As far as actual documentation, there's nothing. And in the affidavits, they're not specific to that lot. I mean, I just quickly read those. It's, I believe that affidavits are specific to where the gas station is.
They were meant to be for both where that was specified.
You know, that's not up to us to interpret, but that's what it was meant to be. Okay, so I certainly like to review that or can I make any decision? I'm sure you would.
Yeah.
So I certainly can't make any decision tonight. And we more than welcome more information if you can.
So we'll come to the assumption that two is fine, that proven that use supposedly.
Supposedly. And the other one?
Eight hours.
We either need some actual documentation or maybe an affidavit that isn't only specific to the gas station.
Well, affidavits discussion.
He said, he said it was.
I know, I have heard of you.
It's, I mean, there are obviously degrees of evidence, which is why I said a moment ago, based upon direct or circumstantial evidence, it, you know, it was sympathy to any applicant when trying to recreate something that occurred 50 or 60 years ago. You're limited, you're limited by what records existed or still exist so many years after the fact. What was required back then was a whole lot less for permitting businesses or permitting uses than what's required now. So there are certain limitations and the board is, you know, would be fair to recognize that. But the burden is also on the applicant to provide you with sufficient information that satisfies you that based upon what could be available, what could reasonably be expected at this point in time, 60 years after the fact, that you can satisfy yourselves that there was enough of a use that it qualifies for the protection. So affidavits, I think, signed under the pains and penalties of perjury go a long way. Whether they get you there, that's up to.